And you're in charge.
Well, I think we fixed it now and put a little clock on there, but when they just show us, they don't say a word, it's like, oh, well, come on, man, we do better than that. September fifteenth, right? All day. Welcome to this five thirty September fifteenth special meeting of the city council for the purpose of the final public hearing on the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Sign up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Comments made under public comment must relate directly to the agenda. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you very much. I now open the final public hearing on the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. City manager.
Yes, sir. What we're doing tonight is conducting our final public hearing of the city's proposed budget for FY 2022. We will read the related ordinances and adopt the final operating and voted debt service millage rate, conduct the final reading of the ordinances proposed and the FY 22 water and sewer solid waste rates, and adopt the final operating enterprise and capital budgets. You'll adopt ordinance twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one.
Ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the city of Tidesville, and voted debt service levy for fiscal year 2022 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, adopting the general and related budget to the city of Tidesville for the fiscal year 2022 and providing for an effective date. An ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, amending utility service rates and charges amending Article two and four of Chapter twenty-one utilities of the Code of Ordinances, amending Section twenty-one dash twenty-seven related to the cross connection control program, amending Section twenty-one dash two forty-one, twenty-one dash two forty-three, and twenty-nine dash two forty-four related to water and sewer rate schedules, water meter charges, utility bills and related matters, providing findings, ratification, incorporation into the code, severability, and effective date. Ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, amending Section sixteen dash one sixteen of the Code of Ordinances, by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste recycling and additional cart fees, and by amending Section sixteen one seventeen of the Code of Ordinances, by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpsters and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees, providing for severability, repeal conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Tidesville, Florida, adopting the enterprise fund and capital improvements program budget to the city of Tidesville for the fiscal year 2022 and providing for an effective date.
And with that?
With your permission, Mayor, we'll go ahead and go through the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
This is your final public hearing, and this budget began back in February with the opening of the, the, the public workshop, and this is the culmination of this year's budget, which will become effective October first of 2021. The FY twenty-two budget has a proposed millage rate of seven point two one four five, which is the current millage rate, the proposed voted debt millage rate of point two nine four one. Council approved a tentative millage rate of eight point two four six one back in July, and that's ten percent above the rollback. You've conducted your workshop in August, August eleventh. You've had your first public hearing, which was September seventh, and this is, in fact, your final public hearing. The ordinances the city attorney just read are listed here. This is what you're going to deliberate on and vote on each one of these separately. Florida statute requires both public hearings. The city council must adopt its millage rate before it adopts its operating capital budgets. Public may speak and ask questions before the city council adopts any of the proposed budget ordinances or amendments. And this is the revenue slide. You'll see the fifty percent, fifty-eight percent of the total budget is created by charges for services. That's the big white area. In our expenditures, you'll see water resources is the twenty-one percent of that pie, along with twenty-five percent going to public safety. The FY twenty-two proposed budget millage rate again is seven point two one four five, which is five point one nine of a percent above the rollback rate of six point eight five eight six, generating one point two of an additional tax dollars. This is a tax increase. The FY twenty-two approved tentative budget was eight point two four six one mills, which is ten percent above rollback, which yielded an additional two point three six million dollars in revenue when compared to the proposed budget for budgetary flexibility throughout the budget hearing process. During the public hearing, council must discuss the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate, if any, to fund the general fund budget and purposes that those will be used for. You'll hear public comment again and regarding any increases in revenues or millage rates. Since this has generated at current one point two million dollars in additional revenues, the proposed budget funds at three percent COLA and pay adjustments to bring our employees closer to the market. We're adding three additional firefighters, three additional police officers, two additional dispatchers, and the equipment for the public safety new hires. When it comes to your general fund, which is fifty-one million, property taxes generates thirty-nine percent of your general revenue funds. That's the, the big green of your pie chart. And in the next slide, in your expenditures, forty-eight percent, the big pie there on the bottom, is dedicated to public service, which is fire and police. When you look at the FY twenty-two proposed per capita, you'll see that Titusville is down in the lower section with West Melbourne and Bivard County being lower, and Cocoa Beach, which is not listed on this, is actually the highest at over a thousand sixty-five dollars per capita, per citizen. How the taxes are being spent, this is a typical one hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven homesteaded property. You'll see the Bar County schools generates thirty-five percent, or eight hundred and seventy-six dollars goes to the Bar County schools. City Titusville, thirty-six percent, or nine hundred and twenty dollars, and Bivard County at twenty percent, which it generates five hundred and four dollars. And you'll see down in the bottom section, each one of the MSTUs, there are two, and St. John's Water Management District and other taxing authorities. When you compare that to your tentative, which is eight point two four six one, the same property of one hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, you'll see that the thirty-three percent going to Bivard Schools generates eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, forty percent going to City Titusville generating one thousand forty-six dollars, and nineteen percent going to Bivard County generating five hundred and four dollars. Within this budget, we still have fourteen million dollars of unfunded requirements. Staff generated a list of the top ten priorities. This is that list, and the proposed funding of each one of these projects, along with the required millage, should you choose to put any of those into the budget. Additional funding for your consideration for the enterprise funds is listed here, totaling two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So total for all priority funding is one point two nine million dollars. Onto utility rate changes. The stormwater management utility is requesting no increase for FY twenty-two. We are going to do a, a survey for next year's budget beginning in 2023, so we can make an assessment on where the stormwater utility should be. On solid waste, we're a collection requesting a three percent increase, which the residential impact of that will be four dollars and forty-four cents annually. A ten percent increase in recycling on a residential bill, that will be a dollar thirty-two annually of an increase. On stormwater, when you compare our, the city we're currently at, and you can see the county, and this is for a single family home, and of course, there's no change. And the next one is for solid waste. You'll see the city is in the light green, and the proposed is the red, and the county averages two, two bars to the right there. So we're below the county average. Solid waste comparisons, again, the city's current is in green, the city's proposed in red, and the average is two bars, correction, three bars from the right there. So we're considerably below that. Onto the water bill for a typical residential with a three-quarter inch meter and existing, the proposed budget rates, a monthly increase to the water bill will be two dollars and fifty-four cents, and that's a three percent increase. For a commercial, same thing, three-quarter inch line, the increase is three point, or three dollars and twenty-three cents. A commercial for a one and a half, the increase is twenty-two points, twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. A rate comparison, you can see Titusville is right in the middle at, at average, and this particular chart does not take into consideration any of the other cities' proposed increases. This is the comparison of their current with our current and then our proposed. So we anticipate several of these cities going up quite a bit. As discussed at the workshop, I think Edgewater is going up nineteen percent. So what we're here to do tonight, additional actions that are required, is you'll approve a tentative millage rate that generates an additional two point three six million dollars over the proposed rate, or consider options of adjusting the millage rate to fund the council budget, make any modifications, fund additional needs, or do a combination of votes. Council actions, we have read all the ordinances. We'll open the final hearing, which you've done, amend the tentative if desired by council, and adopt your budget. And again, the final proposed that you're working off of right now is ten percent above rollback. The city, what, what the recommendation is, is that you go to the current millage rate, which is seven point two one four five mills, and the debt service of two point nine four one. With that, subject to any of your questions.
Yeah, it's point two, not two point.
Oh.
Big difference.
Okay. Very good. So it would be my understanding that we'll take each one of these one at a time and go from there. So with that, I'd like to, and I'll do it this way. I think what I'll do is say, like I normally do, counsel anything on this. If not, we go to the cards. After the cards, we come back to counsel and then get a motion and vote. So with that, city attorney?
Mayor, I just wanted to let the public know, the millage and the budget tied together. So what we'll do, after you have your discussions, we'll take all the cards, which is ordinance twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one on the millage, and then we'll also take cards on the budget, which is twenty-three, twenty, twenty-one, and after the publics have their comment on both of those items, then it'll come back to you and we'll adopt each of those, and then we'll go to the other ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder. I think we did that last time. I appreciate that. I probably would have gone one by one. All right. Counsel, anything you want to add on? We'll start with the, the first one. Vice Mayor Nelson.
I do have a question. I was interested in the lighting on US One, and I understood from Kevin last time that the three hundred thousand dollars is for the planning.
Yeah, that would just be for feasibility of options and planning out the permitting schedules.
Okay. What would that add to our millage rate for the normal household?
By only adding the white way lighting, you're going to add zero point one five two six, which funds three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The additional on your tax bill would be eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Okay.
To fund that single item additionally.
Per year. Per year.
Correct.
Okay, and that would add what in millage?
It adds zero point one five two six.
Okay. Now, it's my question.
Anything else from council before we go to the cards? All right, let's call the cards on twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one.
On, okay, Stan Johnston.
All right, name and address for the record. Oh, sorry. There you go. You're good.
Stan, okay. I'm here as, as an engineer, and that's different than just anything because of, than just a person here. But, but this, these are engineering issues, and we, I have on the back there twelve things, which some of them refer to this meeting, but they have to do with engineering, mistakes, problems, horrible things that's happened in the city. And one of the things you have in your, in your strategies is to have communication. In this case, is I ask questions and I get no answers on all of these, on all of these. So regarding the budget, is that these, the, the millage rate, by the way, I didn't bring what I meant to bring. I had a whole package here. I had the advertisement and so forth that was in the paper, and I oppose this advertisement in the paper because it says, this is, this is a hearing about increase in millage rate and percentage and so forth. And if you look at that ad, it's, it's almost a half page or, or a third of a page and so forth, and it gets big numbers and so forth like that. And I wish I had it right here in front of me, but it, it, it's like, there's no information on it. There's no, and what I'm saying is, it, 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 no percentage rate for the public to see, and what, what it's done is, for example, what we had up there, we had pie charts and so forth like that. That, it's completely represented differently, and it, it doesn't break into the same categories, and I just don't see how it was of any information to the public, the advertisement that we had in, posted in that Florida Today newspaper. I can't believe it. I'd like you to take a look at it sometime. It just, it, it just seems like there's no information there. No percentage. In other words, what it says, if you read what, what it says in our, in the agenda, it says that, you know, it's important to know what kind of increase we're having, percentage of increase. It's not on here. It doesn't show what it was and what it's going to be, anything like that. Doesn't even do that. So it's, it's just, I don't know who put, I don't know who brought it together, but it's, it's horrible. So, so what I'm saying is, this meeting is, is, seems like it really wasn't advertised properly as far as getting information to the public. So I oppose, oppose that part, and, and I noticed that, that Sarah Stokel, she, she, she was opposing it, but then she voted for it as, as far as the tentative was, and, and it's been brought up by someone else about the inflation and so forth, that it seems like that would account for.
Thank you, Mr. Stan.
Thank you.
Anybody, any other cards on twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one?
Yes, Trenton Mansfield.
Next, sir.
Better guide me. My name's Trenton Mansfield. I live in fifteen eighty-five Penn Text Avenue. I handed out tables. The first one is for a homesteaded house. The second one is for a homesteaded house of one seventy. I didn't know it was one seventy-two, so the numbers may be a little off. And then the last one is for a house that goes up in value because it's not homesteaded. The county brings it up, and I guess it was ten percent. I thought it was a little bit more than that, that they're allowed to bring it up. But the first table is a homesteading, okay, I already said that, but I just want to bring attention down to the second table. The second table is the assumption that the property appraisers website says that the home is only worth a hundred and seventy thousand. You can see that the tax increase would be five oh five a month with this, with going with the same tax rate and a hundred and ninety-five with the proposed or the tentative rate. The last table is my home. I use the market value on the property appraisers website. Now, it may be just a small bit lower than that, but that's the numbers that they're giving me. And it says, the property, it has gone up from one sixty-seven to one eighty-eight on those rounded numbers, which is almost eleven percent increase. With the rollback rate, it would be an increase of seven dollars and five cents. With the current millage rate, it would be an increase of twelve dollars and sixty-two cents, and the proposed would be twenty-eight seventy-eight a month. I say all this to say that landlords are in the business to make money. My, mine would only go up thirty to forty dollars a mo, a year, but I'm speaking on the behalf of the people that rent in the city. With just going with just the rollback rate, the increase, landlords are going to pass the cost on to tenants. So increasing home prices and the increasing taxes is a double whammy on those that rent in our city. Remember Robinson? You were worried about inflation in the city last meeting. That was your big worry. But I'm worried about home prices rising, which is good for those that own the homes, but those that rent the homes, it's not good for them and for the increasing taxes in the city. I got forty-five seconds. I mentioned last meeting about new construction going on. I was talking to this gentleman back here earlier, and the condos across the street from Titusville High School are going to be completed within four months, and that's going to be added revenue onto the city, and those were going, I think he said, for three fifty, starting out. And also real estate. People buy real estate, the house, the, the revenue goes up because they, they, they don't adjust it on what it was, they're going on what it was, on what it is now. I just say all this as a concerned citizen, and I would rather you go with the rollback rate or lower taxes in the city of Tidesville. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done with the numbers. I'm going to look at those longer. Another, next card, please? Okay, we have no cards there, so we will move to cards for twenty-three, twenty, twenty-one.
Stan Johnston.
Twenty-three, right? I mean, uh? Uh, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three has to do with the general budget, and I want you to take special note on, on the general budget is that, is that general budget is fifty percent of that is public safety. In other words, when, when he's talking about that, although he had a pie chart, fifty percent of that is public safety. Now, regarding public safety is, that has to do with what my handout is, this handout, public safety, and it has to do with unanswered questions that would be really simple. I mean, if you want to spend fifty dollars, I think you could have turned, you could turn, you could turn, turn the fountains off. Just turn the fountains off. In other words, I can't imagine more than fifty dollars. Why don't we budget for that? Or if we can't, if we have a difficulty paying for somebody to turn the fountains off, why don't we hire a professional engineer or something? Because we, we've got consultant engineers now that can say, hey, you know, is this dangerous or not? See, I've, I've given you, I've written you things saying, it's dangerous to, to, to spray people with sewage. And I believe it's dangerous, maybe the city manager doesn't believe it, but, but to my expertise, it is, it is dangerous. So, and it's not safe. So this budget should include some safety features, like, for example, also using city employees to handle raw sewage. That's a safety issue. And we're talking about fifty percent of the budget, of this general budget. That's a lot of money. Now, we could afford to, another, let's suppose we had nine, nine employees that were not vaccinated, and let's say four of them got, got sick two years later. Hepatitis B can show up much later, two years later. I can imagine easily a million dollar, let's say, settlement per person on that. That's, it's, 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 so there's, you know, there's maybe four million dollars that may come up four years from now, or two years from now, or something like that, because the city, the city didn't, didn't have, didn't use the employees that were vaccinated. I mean, they used employees that were vaccinated, but I'm saying there was a, a number of them that weren't vaccinated and weren't prepared for raw sewage. And so, and, and this is a bad thing, too. I mean, we had diarrhea, vomiting, and so forth, was numerous times brought to the city's attention, FDEP, even Attorney General, the, of the state, and the, what do you call it, the other attorneys, state attorney and so forth. So, so they know about this. They know what the city's doing to it, and like I told you before, is that even the, 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 the governor's office contacted me about this. So they have records about what's going on here. So they not, not saying they, they believe it, but they have it, so.
Thanks, sir.
Consider that in your, in your, in your budget. Thank you.
Next card, please? Okay, we've gone through twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-one. Counsel, any comment on either or? I see no lights unless we're starting to, okay, let me start with Mayor, Vice Mayor Nelson.
I would like to see us look at putting some money on the lighting on US One, because from what I understand from the last meeting is, it sounds like that's something that at some point is going to catch up with us and bite us, and we're going to have to spend money on all of it. So I would rather spend some money on it now and take it and utilize as opposed to have, have us have to spend a lot of money. I don't know what that a lot of money is, but it's like a fairly substantial amount, and probably Mr. Cook could enlighten us, but I would like to see us start taking bites out of that instead of waiting. So that's my two cents.
I will hold on my comment until I hear from Member Jordan.
Oh, okay. By the way, I want to make the motion when it's time, but I, I hear what Vice Mayor is saying, but I don't even like the lights that we have there now. And apparently, you know, we inherited those things a long time ago. Three hundred thousand dollars to, to do the beginning of it equates, if I heard right, it was eighteen dollars more a, a year, which is about a dollar and fifty cents. But also, you know, we may say this is not a lot. I don't think it's a lot of money to do something like that, but we're here to make sure we take care of all, all the citizens. So at this time, I, I don't think it's an emergency for us to do it. It's not a real a necessity, but I agree with you. I just don't agree that this is the time for us to do it. Thank you.
I would, I would say that I, I agree with Member Jordan on that, at least at this time. I would probably like to have discussed it at the last meeting while we were still in the first readings, but even then, I'll be very honest with you, I'm kind of wanting to hold the Um, but even then, I'll be very honest with you, I'm kind of wanting to hold the millage where we are. And, um, if we, as we start the next process and that becomes a thing, we can talk that and move it in here without raising the millage on the final night. So I'm kind of, uh, I'm trying to hold the course here on the millage rate. Member Robinson?
And I, I, I too, uh, want to work on the lights and, because I've had a lot of, uh, concerns. But, uh, yes, I'm, I'm not overly confident of where we're going to be next, next year. And, uh, holding things as, as steady as, as we can, uh, I think would be the, uh, the prudent, uh, way to go.
And I would add to that, that CRA specifically, any chance we had to add lights downtown, we've added lights downtown. Um, I think the older I get, the more I need lights, so I appreciate that. But I also, um, any extension of road paving we can do or infrastructure. But at this time, for this game plan, I think that I want to hold the millage as tight as we can and then discuss and see where we go into next year's situation. That would be where I'm at. Uh, anybody else want to say anything on that? Uh, city attorney?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, I put an ordinance at each of your seats. The purpose of that was, I noticed the ordinance in the package on millage has a section one, two, and four. We just cleaned that up and, and made section three. And section three is the voted debt service, which got combined at the end of section one. So we just took that last sentence of section one, it really should be section three. So I'm letting you know, we passed out, has a section three. Didn't change the numbers, didn't change the information, it just moved the last sentence on voted debt service, that's in section one, and made it section three.
And it doesn't change that we're going to vote on, uh, 20, 2021, 22, excuse me, 2021 and 23, 2021, and then we move forward. And we vote on those separately.
Right, this is just, just letting you know that once you do vote on the millage that you're assessing under 22, 2021, and the voted debt service millage, those numbers will be incorporated into the ordinance. This doesn't affect that, just, just move that last sentence on voted debt service to a section three.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Member Jordan?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance number 22, 2021 of the city of Titusville adopting an operating millage rate of 7.2145 mills, which is 5.19% above the rollback rate of 6.8586 mills, and to adopt the voted depth service millage at .29461 mills based on the sale of General Obligation Bond Series 2005.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan. I have a second from Member Stokel.
Now, the question is, did I, did I do that right?
Yeah, could you, could you read the debt service one more time?
Debt service, .29461. Is that right? I mean, you said two points something.
Just get the numbers right.
It is 0.2941.
Right, that's what I said.
I believe that's what he said. Okay. City attorney, are we set? Okay, I have the motion from Member Jordan. I have the second from Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
That ordinance passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd just like, obviously, to point out that, um, in your ordinance, yeah, when your millage rate exceeds rollback rate, that's characterized as a percentage increase in property taxes, and that's what your ordinance will reflect.
And what's that do to us right now?
No, just characterize it, the fact that you went above rollback is characterized as an increase in property taxes.
All right. All right. Uh, we move on to, um, adopt ordinance number 23, 2021. Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move to approve ordinance number 23, 2021, adopting general and related budgets of the city of Titusville as adjusted for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
I have the motion by Member Jordan, the second by Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We move to 24, 2021. City manager? I, I, I realize, is there anything else we need to do with that? Okay. The, the new sign will be, I say, city manager, you say you're good to go. Good to go. All right, uh, council? Cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, this has to do with water resources. Again, you've seen this sign, seen this sign about the spring. It's not a Jurassic, there's no answer. And I'm an engineer, and I'm saying we've got a problem. I'm asking for answers, and I'm not getting them. Now, on the back sheet, there's, uh, what I would like you to have included in the budget for water resources is number, there's, there's 12 listed here. 11 of them apply. Number seven doesn't apply, has to do, some has to do with, uh, Parish Park. But all of these other ones apply to water resources. And all of these 11 items, uh, that I've listed here, all of them apply to water resources. What I'm getting is no answers. So in other words, what we have here is, is, uh, we have public hearings. And, and what, what good is a public hearing when somebody comes up here and talks, like me, and I don't get any answers? What good does it have, city manager, council, and staff if I don't get answers? For example, right now, it seems like, well, why don't, why don't we do something like this? Why don't we have a telephone that works at water resources? They don't answer the telephone. I just leave messages, nobody answer the telephone. I call lab, oh, they're not going to respond. I call Mr. Stauffer, no, they're not going to respond. So what kind of a, uh, operation do we have here? It's dysfunctional. And what we need to do is, is to spend some money, you know, to have, I mean, maybe you can pay him, Mr. Stauffer, some extra to, to answer the phone. Because I'm not the only one. We had a number of questions. So, so what we have here is 11 items here, uh, regarding the consent order that doesn't make any sense, regarding sewage that went into the river, which is one of our, uh, big things about strategic planning and, you know, improve the river. And it's not being done. So, so I'm asking you to, in, in water resources, is to, is to add some things to it, which I'm giving you. Uh, in other words, for example, they should have put the health hazard signs up, uh, they should have stopped, you should have stopped sewage into the, uh, spraying the people with sewage. Well, that's just seems like a nice, nice thing to do. Uh, and it isn't. And there's no, no, we can't get a, an answer from them, and FDEP won't answer, and, and it's, the Florida Today newspaper, I guess, what are they, so embarrassed that they won't even put it in the paper? They've been contacted by me and others, and all these pictures and so forth. They went to Florida Today also. So, so it shows here that, you know, you're dumping sewage into the river, and, uh, back in even February the 18th, we got all kinds of witnesses, but yet what you do is you sign a consent order that says you didn't do it. You didn't do it. So maybe somebody will get sick, and maybe you'll find out later that, that, that it was a mistake and you should correct it. Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. Uh, next card, please?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, council? Uh, Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we adopt ordinance.
Hold one second. Member Robinson?
Yes, I want to, uh, thank the staff for, uh, sending out a very understandable breakdown on how to, you come up with the, uh, the increases and how much exactly even down to 10,000 to 15,000 gallons, how much that would be broke down. It had made, made me very, very understandable, and I want to thank you for the effort that you put into that.
Yeah, I certainly would, would second that, uh, word. I think as we went through this the very first time, I think the most important thing to our citizens is, is the bottom line. You know, $2.54 or whatever, because, uh, if they're anything like me, I don't understand all the stuff in between, but I understand when I got to pay my bill. And I think that was very well done. Thank you, Member Robinson, for noting that. Member Jordan?
Okay. Just want to make sure. Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we adopt ordinance number 24, 21, amending the schedule fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates.
Second.
Member Jordan with the motion, Member Stokel with the second. City attorney, city manager, we're good with that? Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We move on to 25, 2021. Council? Call the cards, please.
We have one card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm here as a, as a, an engineer, and, and I used to work for Public Works. I retired in 2008, and, and regarding solid waste is, uh, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, solid waste. Um, any, any comments from council on that or nothing? Okay, Member Jordan?
Mayor and council, I move that we adopt ordinance number 25, 2021, amending section 16116 and 16117 of the Code of Ordinances by increasing the solid waste service charges and rates.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We move to ordinance number 26, 2021. Um, council? Call the cards, please?
We have two cards. First one, Stan Johnston.
Uh, Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. Um, here I am, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I want to tell you about something that I told you about, and nobody's listening, it seems like, is that I called up FDEP, and I told you about this before. And I said that, uh, Mr. Stauffer's, but this has to do with budgeting and, and money, big time. Uh, and, and so I, I said that he's not telling you everything about the boiled water alert. According to my conversation with Manny of FDEP, he said that his conversation with, with, uh, with Mr. Stauffer has to do with the floor log virus. And that has to do with, there's, I don't know of any city, there are, uh, maybe there's, there's one or two or something like that cities, or three or four, whatever that cities in Florida that are susceptible to this rule. But I don't know what they are, who they are, but the city of Titusville is one of few, very few. In other words, uh, having, uh, coliform in the water before it's treated and, and putting a, a boiled water notice. I didn't know it even existed until it happened here in the city. And it happened, he didn't tell us about the other one. It happened also in 2018. He needs to tell you. You need to find out what's going on, because it should not happen at all. It's not happening with the city of Cocoa Water. Uh-uh. I don't know where else it's happening, but it's a very rare thing that happens. And, and he needs to tell you. He doesn't tell you. So that's a big item. Maybe it'll cost $25 something, but just do it. So anyhow, uh, so I, I'm just letting you know that, that the enterprise fund, and I told you these other things they need to consider on the, on these, uh, enterprise funds, uh, and also you might even consider capital improvements. Um, and, uh, you need to consider that what I'm, what I'm reporting to you is bad engineering, faulty engineering, and absolutely no engineering in the number of cases. That's what's going on with these, these, these items here, number one through 12, and, but number, uh, except for number seven, excluding number seven. So, uh, I'd like you to answer questions sometime, someday, answer questions, because there may be a reckoning someday. When the voters come up next time, I don't think that we're gonna, I think we're gonna lose Mr. Jordan, Ms. Nelsons, and Ms. Stokel. I don't think the voters are going to put up with it anymore. I think we're gonna, you're gonna be gone. So you don't, I don't even know if you're gonna try for council again, because I just don't see anybody gonna, gonna vote for you guys, three of you. It's gone. I just don't see it, talking to other people. So, um, we'll see what happens. Thank you for the time. I got about three seconds left. Thank you.
Next card, please.
Nathan Slusher?
Good evening. Nathan Slusher, 860 Allendale Street. Um, I wanted to speak about the 4.2 million in the state fund, state loan we talked about during the workshop. I understand the purpose of it, and something the mayor said at the very last meeting, I went home and thought about it, he said, well, the money has to come from somewhere and we don't have it. And I think you're absolutely right. Uh, I don't think screaming cut funding is the answer, because these are very important projects that needs to be done. However, I do think before we decide to take the money, we should probably ask for it. Because I would personally be the first person to put 100 bucks up, no problem, towards an infrastructure project. I think it's amazing. But just voting to take it, before we ever make a press release and say, hey, does anybody want to help? Do we want to help build Titusville? We, we know how much it's going to cost over the next five years. I think we could easily raise three to five million a year to fund that. So that was my only request, was before we vote to just take it, we just ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Okay, council, any other comments on that? I see none. Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we adopt ordinance number 26, 2021, adopting the enterprise funds and capital improvement programs of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2022.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Motion passes unanimously. And, um, that is all five of those. We move to petitions and requests. So petitions and requests from the public at this time?
Stan Johnston, uh, I'm speaking as an engineer and also as a resident, and I'm, I'm very pleased with some things, services the city is getting, from like Public Works, the Police Department, Fire, and, um, the City Clerk's Office. But as you, as you know, is that I'm, I, I've given you this sheet of paper that, that shows some, some very serious problems, uh, photographically, and it shows that, uh, also, uh, written in here, it's, 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 it's saying, actually, it's, what it's saying is that our, uh, we've, our government is dysfunctional. The city of Titusville government is dysfunctional. And it's obvious, if you were to really read my emails, you'll find out that the city, our, our city is, is really in bad shape. Our city manager, I mean, this, what this, this, this says, it says, our city manager is a hustler, a shyster, and a malicious fraudster. That's what this says, pictorially and, and written. That's what it says. So you need to take, take notice about, wake up and see what's going on. Let's get out of this la-la land and whatever you're in, and, and see what's really going on here. It's bad. It's, it's, it's atrocious. So, um, we have some very good services here in the town. I mean, I, I've been here 50 years, got five generations of my family here. My wife's got five generations of family here. Well, only four right now. But, but, uh, so we're here, and we've been here a long time, and we see problems. And I know that some of you do, too. So you need to, uh, take notice of what's going on here and see that, uh, we have something that is horribly dysfunctional. It's not going right, and it's right here. It's right here. You look at the pictures, read the pictures, or look at the pictures, and we have horrible dishonesty and, uh, bad engineering, no engineering, faulty engineering, and so forth. So I'm speaking as an engineer. Get an engineer to oppose me. That's what I'd love you to do. You can't get one. You're not going to get one, because what I'm telling you is the truth. And just like in your rotary, four steps in rotary, or whatever it is, the first one is, is, is what is the truth? That's what you need to ask in question. And we know already is that right now is, the city manager is not telling the truth. I mean, it's right here repeatedly, again, and again, and again. It's dishonesty. So we've got problems, I'd like you to take attention to them, and thank you for letting me speak. Good night. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Any other petitions or requests? I see none. City Manager, you want to...
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, I'd just like to recognize staff who put this budget together. A lot of hard work went into this. It was still going into the budget, uncertain environment, and I think we came through with a good, solid budget, we're looking forward to executing, so thanks to the, the solid staff behind us that put it together. And last but not least, this is Chief Michael Woodward's last budget hearing with us, so we were able to provide a recognition ceremony for Chief today, but I'd like to offer a round of applause for Chief's service here. And subject to your questions.
City Attorney, anything? I, I, I too would like to add, and I think we, Member Robinson said it, it's been said, I think we all have said it, staff is amazing. I've always said that you guys keep us a little ahead of the curve, what's coming, you know, we're, I feel like we're safe into the future, and some of the things, like Member Nelson mentioned some things tonight that we may want to work on, you guys are always working on them. And, and it's not just the budget, it's when you sit here every, every week, and I appreciate that very much. I would add City Manager and City Attorney into that equation, and thank you guys for all that you do.